Andrew Vaughan.
Nate Blake.
Joe Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any extensions or conflicts?
I have none.
Looking at tonight's agenda. Item C under eight. Joe Allen is going to present that next week.
Did you have anything more to say than that?
No, nothing more to say than that.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? It's move to accept that and minutes or were there any comments on minutes on May 8?
Just a minor correction on the minutes on May 8. Under item number five, couple of agenda. Just make clarification with this suburbage. Second sentence is Joe Allen motion to move tonight's agenda.
Yes.
Can you just correct that to Joe Allen move?
Eliminate the word motion.
Just like in the next sentence down, said we're going to move to add. So the same sort of verbiage. And then another sentence down, Joe Allen motion to approve. Joe Allen moved to approve. Any other dots and?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda consisting of tonight's agenda, excluding item EC, which will be discussed at future time, and to accept the meeting minutes of May 8, 2013 as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements? Anybody have any announcements? Announcement that I might make is that we do still need a couple of planning commission members. So if there's someone that you think might be good, encourage them to put in an application to the court. Okay, there are no public hearings. Moving on to action item, which is discussion and possible action on the tentative 2013-14 town budget. And Wayne is going to be presenting that.
Okay.
And he has some opening statements, I think.
Yes. I hope, although it was only on Tuesday in the early afternoon, that I was able to get copies out to town council members, I hope you've had some chance to review it. What we are looking at for the 2013-2014 year, although it's not a requirement in that we have an opening fund balance, that does not have to equal a closing fund balance. This preliminary budget that has been prepared actually is a balanced one that has budgeted revenues equal to budgeted expenses. Last year's budgeted revenue and expenses were also equal, they were at $279,721. This year's, it's $300,907.60. That's an increase in 7.6 percent. In preparing the budget, I would be remiss in not highlighting the incredible effort put forward by our clerk recorder, Bob Goldsberry, in getting up to date all of the information that was needed so that we had the proper starting point, the proper projections for where we are likely to be as of June 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year 2012-2013. From that point forward, there are recommended, which you see in your work papers, budgeted amounts for each of the line items. And then it is also formatted in the format required by the state, which is something that is different from what QuickBooks provides. But I have developed a mapping that allows us to translate our budget on QuickBooks into the format that the state requires us to submit. What we are looking to do this evening is to pass a preliminary budget. That budget needs to be the subject of a public hearing, which would be planned to take place on June 12th. At that point in time, we would need to pass a final budget. The state deadline for us submitting a final budget is on the 22nd of June. So timetable wise, what we would be doing this evening is just approving the preliminary budget that has been proposed. We will then make it available to the public through our website, and if they choose to come to town hall, we can provide copies to them if they prefer. And then we need to hold a full public hearing on that budget in a couple of weeks on the 12th of June.
At this point, we're open for a discussion on items in the budget?
Yes.
I suggest we start on the revenue page. There's only one I would suggest as a modification to, that would be revenues from building permits. I think with the growing economy and the increase in land values, building permits across Washington County are way up this year over last year. And in the next year, I think that trend is going to hold, at least all sides back for that. So I would suggest we increase the revenue that we anticipate will come in from the building permits in the next year. As opposed to holding it even with what our budget was last year.
Actually, our budget last year was 6,000, and we've come in actual, we're projecting it to finish where it is right now at 8,300.
Yeah. And that's, I guess that's my point, is that if our actual for the last fiscal year is 8,300, I think our actual in the next fiscal year is going to be higher. I would suggest the number 10 now.
If I could recommend on the expense side, with the thinking that you have there, that it would probably be appropriate to increase our administrative wages by a similar amount, and that if it needed plays out, that we have more activity in that area, we will probably need to utilize more administrative staff time on that.
Yeah, I would suggest an equivalent percentage basis.
So the percentage basis that we're looking at would be what?
Well, the thing that's a little challenging on doing it as a percentage is we do not break out how we expect our administrative costs to be tied to a building permit. And so a 25 percent increase in building permits certainly wouldn't increase our overall administrative costs, so.
That's true.
Perhaps a flat dollar amount in terms of the budget would be a reasonable starting point. One of the things I used to always highlight, the one thing that's nice with the Leeds area special services, is that you actually can start the year with a budgeted amount with certainty, knowing you're going to be precise. But I've been through so many budgets where not a single line item will be perfect. In this case, I think we do have one, but I think adding the 2,000 will allow us to pretty closely reflect that increased anticipation of activity.
I have a question on the expense side, either culture and recreation. We've got two line items, 4th of July fireworks and 4th of July with $1,100 or $1,200 budgeted in the proposed budget for 4th of July. Does that include the fireworks display?
Yes, so one of the things that Bob and I discovered due to the variety of people who've been making entries into QuickBooks, was that there were many items where we had a budgeted amount entered into it, and then as the expenses were starting to be incurred, new accounts were created with very similar names as highlighted there, that resulted in that type of thing happening. But we did not feel we had time to really go through and clean it up, but Bob has mentioned to me, he wants to make it a priority over the course of the next five weeks before we get to fiscal year end, to try to get things moved back and eliminate many of these really duplicate line items that have evolved over time.
Another question on that same category, Washington County Fair, $200. What do we contribute to the fair, or why are we defending my own fair?
What I understand is that each town has the opportunity to participate in doing a display. And Denise Allen is already working on that. And I'm not sure what was spent last year, but well, it seems.
$314.15.
It's not much money, however, she cares.
Right, yeah.
I think one year we won first place or something, they had one, was made with beans. This display's been several years ago, I can't remember who did that.
Some Britons back there.
This one is going to be seeds. It's some sort of a natural theme, and she's been collecting and buying seeds to make the display with.
Another question I have to send under the professional services category, line item computer technology. You've gotten the proposed budget, almost $10,000. What's that for exactly?
Okay, one of the things that we've identified is that we really should have a backup system that is automated and attached to our server to make sure that we are able to recover virtually everything at any given time should we have a problem. We don't have that in place right now. The actual cost of the equipment is probably only a couple hundred dollars, but it would be a few hundred dollars more in order to get the work done, to make sure that everything's properly set up, to automatically back us, so we're not relying on a member to do that. The bulk of the money in the technology budget, though, is related to trying to address our issue with regard to our accounting system, and move to something that would allow us to be more in line with what the state and other municipalities are using, and in the case of the state, would allow us to satisfy their requirements in a much smoother fashion without having to go through a QuickBooks mapping to a state format and then submitting it that way. So that's where the increased money towards technology is being anticipated for the next year of budget.
And how is that 99.76, 60 cents derived? Was that just a function of balancing or?
You have found where we got to a balanced budget, exactly. We actually, I added about 900, and once we got past the thousands there, I added that in order to get us to a balanced situation, so congratulations.
One area I would suggest we increase our expenses is, I'd like to see the town donate some funds to the museum. See the town take part in the museum, take some, a little feeling ownership, if you will. Wells Fargo, those buildings in Silver River, they're such a big part of our town. Talk to a lot of people, tell them I live in Leeds, and they say, where's that? I say, well, there are silver, they go, oh yeah, I see that sign on the freeway. I've been to that museum. I don't know how much money the town would have available to donate, but I think that's one of the few pieces of our heritage that we really should be supporting. I'd like to see the town donating several thousand dollars a year toward the museum and its goals of preserving the history of our region.
One of the comments that I shared with all of you when I sent around the budget was that, you know, I felt that we have a very good budget with regards to having gone through and really looked at every number behind it, but I didn't think it was an excellent budget. And I think what you're suggesting there is something that could make it an excellent budget. The only concern I have with trying to add that right now, I think it's a great thing to add going forward on an ongoing basis, but I think we as a council need to make sure we've gone through and really understood all of the priorities that we face as a town, where we want to take things directionally. The fact that it's a non-budgeted item would not prohibit us, if things do develop in the museum over the course of the months in the new fiscal year, to perhaps reallocate some funds towards that. I don't know whether it might be premature or not in terms of the museum getting to a new status where it's going to be open on a regular basis, if that's going to occur. And if it does, I think we could revisit it and perhaps do some reallocation of funds. The one thing I'd like to mention, not trying to change the subject, but just there is money in here with respect to Tree City USA. The hope would be that we will be able to get community support in terms of volunteer hours, that we will end up not expending any money for that. But the requirements in order to be able to participate and qualify for the grants is that we do budget for it, and in a quote-unquote worst-case scenario, if we don't have the volunteer hours, we do have the money here in the budget in order to support that. And I'm not disagreeing with regard to the museum, I just don't know whether or not we have enough certainty there.
Sure, but rather than assigning it specifically to the museum, you know, in our last year's budget, we had $2,500 budgeted toward historical preservation, other. And we didn't use any of those funds. I think that we really should be investing in our history and our culture in this area. And my experience with budgets is, if you don't put it in your budget, you're not going to allocate the funds to it. Because we have so few dollars and they're already spoken to it. But if we plan on it, then we can, with some reasonable certainty, say, okay, you know, the museum does get going, we want to make a donation there, create a camp, or if we wanted, as a town, to, we want to make it to the Washington County Arts Council, we could do that, or if we had a project, you know, the CCC camp, any of those programs, we have the money set aside, so we could do that.
My concern is regarding some of our other issues we're doing, that we're going to run into some anomalies that we're facing, that we don't know the outcome of at this point. And I hate to get ahead of ourselves too far. Well, I think it's okay to go ahead and put it in the budget, and then when we get to discussion, we can take it out. It's like June 12th, and put it in, and I have some idea a little bit more on the budget, so. I mean, I don't think anybody on council wants to put something on, but the budget should be able to put it on during the June 12th. You know, we decide whether that comes off or if something gets added on, or it doesn't happen at all, or we just wait till we have funds down the road, but I don't think it's any hard.
The town may speak up if public hearing says, oh no.
Yeah.
Let's destroy the museum.
Okay, if I'm hearing correctly, then the thought would be to add on expenditures under historical preservation, other, a $2,500 budget, which is the same as the budget was for this fiscal year, but we have not had any spending towards that.
Correct. That means we need to take 2,000 or something.
We don't need to, it doesn't have to be a balanced budget.
Yeah, our general fund has money in it to handle that, but.
I think it makes sense in the other instance when I mentioned, just if we're thinking through and expecting higher, I think we should expect higher revenues. This is not something that I see as a linked aspect to it, so I don't think it's inappropriate to just put it in as a budgeted expense at this point.
Another item I'd like to discuss would be some sort of compensation for our mayor. You know, if the mayor would choose to accept that, it's a, it's a tough job, and it requires full-time attention. And most every other municipality has compensation, should we know, as in favor of that, when Mayor Roberts was serving, I'd be in favor of Mayor Moore and for future matters. And I think that it would be wise to include that in this budget and future budgets.
The budget from last year did include $960 in compensation for the mayor for the year. It's my understanding that that compensation was waived by the mayors. This budget does include the same as last year. It's in administrative wages as where you would be.
It's not specific.
And you won't see it as a separate line item, but it is part of that.
But we've got, is it the mayor's election year this year? It's hard to pass a salary for yourself, but thinking about a future mayor, I would not be opposed to the increase. And I don't want to tell the country.
And going through this, this was something that I had felt was important also, be there. Whether it's taking advantage of within this year or not, at least it did align a line item to the future councils to consent.
Sure. I think the concept of some form of compensation, it lends credibility, it lends professionalism to the job, because it is a job. Predominantly, we're a volunteer council, but I think adding that form of compensation would make it more professional setting.
May I suggest we, for the preliminary budget, stick with this amount, and it can be raised, and we could get public input at the hearing to get a sense of other people's thoughts on that.
Sure. Since it's not spelled out in this, do we need to put that in somehow? Make it visible?
Given the number of accounts we have, I'm not in any way suggesting we want to hide it away, but if we were to try to itemize every thousand dollars worth of expenditure, it would be one heck of a document for people to try to digest, so, you know, I think we certainly should highlight it in discussion, because it's been brought up at council, that, you know, people will be aware that that's part of the preliminary budget, and get input at the meeting in June 12th. Any other questions or comments? Well, we do need to pass the preliminary budget this evening, so.
Well, it doesn't have.
It just cleaning up something, or?
Yeah, okay. It doesn't have anything to do with the amount.
The numbers, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions, comments?
If I could then, I think it would be appropriate for me to make a motion to approve the tentative 2013-2014 town budget as amended, with the amendments being an increase in building permits of 2,000, an increase in administrative wage expense of 2,000, and then an increase in historic preservation expense of 2,500 for the budget. 2013-2014 year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I just have one question for you about the public works wages. Saw a significant jump in that. Is there reasoning behind that?
The public works wages should be looked at in conjunction with the, I don't know if you looked at both highway and parks. But I think if you were to look at the combination of highway and parks, you would see a significant jump. It's how it breaks out between the two, and I was going on the assumption that what we saw this year in expenditures was the best guess as far as how it would break out next year. But the amount that was spent, you're right.
Okay, that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just comment that on the highways and streets, expense item B and C, I've verified that we have increased it up to 40,000 because we are looking at some major repairs remaining for the year.
That also equals the amount that we are anticipating based on recent receipts from the state in that category as well. So we're looking to try to budget and figure on spending what we're taking in next year on B and C roads to make sure we get the improvements done.
Okay, any more questions? It's been moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call?
I think it's best to do a roll call.
Roll call vote. You want to lead off, Joe?
Joe Allen? Aye.
Nate Blake? Aye.
Wayne Peterson, aye.
Frank Boyko, aye.
Andrew Vaughan, aye. Okay, thank you. And so we will be making this available to the public on the day.
Just given there are a few edits that need to be brought in before this week is out, I think it's an appropriate time to make sure we get that done. But I don't want to promise tomorrow morning and find out that it took us a little bit longer to get it up onto the website.
I would like to point out, if you saw this, these are the, at the stage.
Okay, then moving on to discussion items. Roger New, are you ready? Talking about those 26 acres on Shinnaham Circle.
Hi, my name is Roger New. I'm representing Vic Lesser, who is purchasing the 26 acres that's located by the water tower up on Shinnaham Circle. And the property has some flat area up on top to hill, and then it includes the hillside, and then some flat area down alongside the freeways. What we would like to do is to create three lots on that 26 acres, up on the upper part that's on Shinnaham Circle, up on Public Road. We, I met with a planning commission and trying to revise some definitions. What we would like to do is have this 26 acres broken up into three lots, which, I don't know what size those lots would be, but conceivably they could be eight acres.
A minimum of two, though.
Yeah, minimum of two. So I had kind of a concept, but I changed this already. When I met with the council, they said that our two zoning required 150 foot of frontage, and I was showing, you know, kind of conceptually 120 feet. So we would have 150 foot of frontage on each of those lots. And I've been in meetings with the district health department on the septic service that they would have here, they will, because the lots did not meet the criteria for conditional wastewater systems, we're going to go to a treatment system for each lot. And then kind of an adjacent septic field where the drain field would be going with the utility easement or heated access leading to it, they were favorable to this concept. easement or heated access leading to it, they were favorable to this concept. The planning commission did suggest that we approach this as a minor subdivision. They also asked that we get a topographical survey, which we do need at some point in time, but I kind of wanted to pass the concept to the town council to see if we were favorable to having the building sites, you know, smaller such as a third acre or, I don't know, maybe even a quarter acre. The only measurements I have are some crude measurements I did with a measuring wheel. So until we have the survey, we won't know exact sizes, but I think there's maybe four to six acres of flat area that could be used for the building sites and the septic systems. So I wondered, I had some confusion over definitions of what, let me see, is that term contiguous? I didn't see contiguous in the definitions in chapter thirteen of the building, the land use ordinance. But these contiguous, the dictionary definition was continuous or attached or connected. These lots would be, you know, connected, you know, with acre parcels potentially, maybe some larger, smaller, but would be at least two acres. I think we can meet the frontage, side yard, and other setbacks that are required here. But I wanted just, the main thing is, you know, could we have a smaller building pad on a large lot that's, because of the hillside, it's not all, you know, buildable or usable or even, you know, drivable. But having the smaller building site on a larger parcel, that's kind of what I wanted to, did the feelings of the council that they thought that would be acceptable. This is adjacent to Silver Valley Estates. Most all of Silver Valley Estates, I believe, is zoned or won for one acre parcels. And I know there's several parcels where out of that acre, you might have a third of an acre that's buildable and you've got, you know, hills and so forth. So I think they could do this development in harmony with what's in the area right now. And I guess we would approach that as a minor subdivision, the three individual lots.
So your concern is pad size?
Uh huh. We would want to kind of have a feeling, you know, about a smaller pad size, even though it's eight acres, maybe the pad's a third of an acre.
I don't believe there's an ordinance for a pad size. Yeah, I don't think that's.
Okay.
That's only, that's only been in special developments like facility filings have the required pads and you had the minimum size of the property to build, like you had to build thirty-seven hundred feet, not exceed six thousand.
Yes.
So.
Okay, yeah, there was some confusion when I made some phone calls. It's to, you know, did the trade zone mean you had that two flat acres? That wouldn't be the case on these lots, but I'm thinking that, just in my crude measurements, we could probably see a third of an acre maybe for a building pad.
So would they be building up on top? I'm a little confused.
They're, I don't know how close to the edge they planted. I think they're probably closer to the road than.
We do have a hillside ordinance.
Before we go any further, just to point out that we're not voting on anything tonight, so I didn't declare any kind of conflict of interest or extension, but I'm representing the seller as the real estate broker in this transaction. So if any came to the point where we would be granting any kind of approval, I'd excuse myself from that. But I'd have to provide insights to the property, pretty familiar with this one.
Definitely welcome to do so. I think they'd be building closer to the road with a fifty-foot setback. I think it's what is called for in the R two zoning. So they would, if we remain in the R two zoning, then we would meet those setbacks and side yards. I think Mr. Lesser would like to put a dark handle in, and we have some, I guess it's outlined in the regulations where that would be situated in the back of the property. And it would probably be closer to the cliff, to the hillside in the back of the lot. So, but we would, you know, be in compliance with those state regulations.
Looking at the chart here for minimum, what area, you know, requirements for our residential, rural residential too, you set a hundred and fifty feet frontage, and that's, that's what you set, right?
Yes.
That you counted on. The front setback says twenty-five feet at a minimum.
Oh, okay.
So at fifty feet, you would be well again. Side is fifteen. I would think on two acres, you should be able to achieve a pad location that would be twenty fifteen feet from the property line either side. And then a rear setback of fifteen feet. And I'm thinking at a minimum, you would want at least fifteen feet from where the cliff begins.
Okay. Yeah, we're.
But then you've got to also allow space for, even if it's a reduced size septic system, you still need to have that space.
Yeah, we would have space. I guess at some point, we realize that he's going to have to get a survey, a topographical survey, before I can finalize where the septic systems will go. We need that survey. But before he went to the expense of the survey, he wanted to kind of get a feel as to, you know, could he build on a smaller pad if he had, you know, two or more acres, even though a lot of that would be inaccessible, practically inaccessible.
Where did you get the impression that there was a prescribed pad signs?
As long as we don't get into the hillside ordinance, I don't see any issues that you brought up today that would be a concern other than, other than we want to see the layout and the bad septic system and all where it lays and easements and my.
Yeah, I did think through a helpful conversation with.
Bob Nicholson?
It wasn't Bob, it was Sterling, the planning commission.
Danielle?
Danielle, that's it. She, then we met, it didn't seem to be topography connected to the building site so much. I think there may have been some confusion in our communication over the phone, but once I met with the commission, they seemed to think that it was not a fixed two-acre building site on our R two zoning. But I just wanted to come for the council. They really are advisory and they have made decisions. Ultimately, this will come before the town council. It's a minor subdivision. But I just wanted to kind of touch base and get some feel as to, you know, if this is something that would be acceptable. We will get a survey for the preliminary plan of these three lots, and then I'll be able to fix these septic systems a little better. You know, I got them staked out on the property, but I wasn't able to really survey it and put them on a plan.
And you'll have a topograph, a topographical map like that?
Yes, there'll be a topographical map. We'll need that in order to plan out the septic again, show where the cliff is and exactly how much room we have and sort of show the property work starts dropping off.
I think, I was at a planning commission meeting several months ago when we started discussing this issue, and there's no concern about the buildable area. The question comes in about the hillside ordinance that we have.
Right.
Do we have to have two acres of flat ground that's not hillside?
No.
That was the question, because we've got, we've got twenty-six acres total here. Much of it is hillside and would be prohibited from building upon it because of our hillside ordinance.
Well, I think, I think there is a question, which is the problem, there has to be purple built, you know, other buildings are added, they have to be so far off from the property. And so what you'd end up doing is you're counting all the hillside and you're cramming everything in a smaller area. I think that then creates the idea of how much acres you need to have that's left, that's usually, because what would happen if this commercial kennel has two hundred dogs, and yet you can't use ten acres below, but there are noise levels and all the other things are a nuisance or trespassing to the neighbors.
Those are issues we'll have to decide when they come forward.
Yeah, I think that's something that needs to be considered.
Yeah, the building plans are a primary concern. The kennel, I guess, you'll have to come in and have public hearings on that one, you know, because the public needs to be able to comment on whether or not they want, and I don't know how many dogs.
Well, the other concern is their animal rights. They're allowed to have two large animals per acre, if I'm not mistaken. And you don't want to, particularly conditionally as well. Well, I'm talking about just as far as horses.
Mm-hmm.
You don't want to have somebody, you know, the horses in their front yard just because they meet the requirements or because they have acres. So that'd be something to be.
Well, all the reason I'm bringing this up is I think the person needs to look at how it might be, sort of scenario. So if they don't end up assuming that they're going to get all these exceptions, we're just looking at.
So the kennel needs to be a separate issue than with conditional use or mid. He, I think he plans to build on one side within an extra three years and the other two sites for his children, which he might find a spot on there where he could put a kennel on one of the other lots. And then it could be, on one side of the property at six hundred feet from the road to the hillside.
Right.
You know, before it starts dropping off. So he'd put it down in the corner there. I don't think it would really affect anybody. But, you know, we didn't, I haven't really discussed the kennel ordinance other than the fact that we would like to have one. And I don't know how many dogs, but I think talk to him and find out. But I would let him know that it's, you know, just because he's getting a building site doesn't automatically grant him the right to have a kennel, but, you know, whatever number of dogs he plans to have.
The other thing that I can't answer, and that's something that needs to be checked in, is that that's, the roads that he's going on, county roads to get up to the property.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how the county will view what the traffic would be if this is a big business where he has thousands of dogs and people are going up there.
Having spoken with the buyer, the intent is to breed a couple of dogs and have a litter or two at a time on the property. We're not talking about a puppy, no.
I know, but I'm just, that's what we all say.
Yeah.
I think it was presented in two different phases, the minor lots subdivision first and then.
Yeah, I think that would be agreeable.
Separate, separate the issues. And a topographical map of the, of the, of the map plan would be nice to see.
Okay. And the main thing I wanted to establish was that there wasn't a designated building pad on a two-acre lot, so.
So I'm saying not given the hillside ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, and the hillside ordinance just deals with the hillside, doesn't it? Does the top of the hill affected by the ordinance?
It's a thirty percent slope.
Okay.
So you'll have to get a topographical, you know, to be able to touch.
Is it thirty or twenty? Well, thirty was being flown around, so I'm going to, no, it's not twenty, it's.
Better.
With the ordinance, most of those change twenty percent per street grid.
So more than twenty percent would be considered hillside? So we could measure from the road out to where, you know, was a maximum of twenty percent drop. I think that, you know, we would have that on a topographical map. But I think the next step is to get that topographical map and then work at the minor subdivision ordinances and all talk about the dogs and let it know that's going to be a separate issue altogether. That won't be connected to the subdivision. Yeah, okay.
On the issue of animals, a minimum distance between animals and any residential, not just theirs, but neighbors, is fifty feet.
Okay, maybe that's where that fifty feet came from. They need to be fifty feet from the residence.
And Bob Nicholson was there at the planning commission meeting, and he was the one that was throwing out the numbers on the hillside. And he would also be the one to review what's presented.
Okay.
And help judge whether it's applicable or not.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that's been answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, chapter twenty-two, the signs, ordinance, and the way of this plan, ordinance.
So Chris, do you want to stand up and explain to the. I sent up three other pieces.
Touche. So many of the recommendations were generated by Bob Nicholson and in reference to, a lot of the numbers that were down there were really too small to be effective. And so what you see is a lot of changes there.
Could I ask a question here?
Yes.
So what was the motivating factor for so many, so many changes in sign ordinance? Was that just he was given a task and just decided to compare it to another town or city, or what was the rationale?
I don't know how it first came up. I know the planning commission's been working on this for several months. And, you know, whether it was instigated from Pam or from the commission or outside, I'm not sure.
I think we're trying to resolve all our, all our ordinances into piecemeal into one large draft that we finalize for the near future. Because we then, we have that piecemeal a lot of.
Because I know when the sign ordinance was developed, I know that Dave Harbor was pretty adamant about keeping things for a town rather than looking at what major cities were doing. And it looks like we've implemented some major city things in here that are not necessarily applicable through the rural atmosphere of a small town. And I'm just, I'd like to know the sources of where some of this came from. Like if this is St. George and whether it's really applicable for our town, or if somebody's got a concern as a business owner and they'd like for some things to be modified to help their business out, you know, it would be nice to know how different the needs are. There's just so many changes.
I know that some of the changes, like for example Walton Plaza, the current sign ordinance would allow signs that would be so small that you could not effectively see a business there.
Right.
Or the Silver Country Stores. There was one change that was made, our big sign at south end of town on Main Street that said, "Welcome to Leeds."
Right.
There was a change to make that in compliance with the sign ordinance. I'm not sure about some of the other changes, though.
I mean, a real estate sign, shannon, it's a four feet, which is what it's before, that's a two by two. It's a small. It's really hard to read.
Yeah, and that got changed to eight feet, wasn't it?
Yes, which is like a two by four. Yes, which is like a two-by-four. Or something less than that.
Real estate signs, just being in the business, standard property sign, those in your front yard is eighteen by twenty-four inches. So...
So contracts are still...
Yeah, I'm just talking for sale sign, real estate, because it doesn't address contract or something. So I don't know whether it's four feet square feet or eight square feet. I don't know if that makes that big a difference. Although I think there are areas, like for example, I put up signs advertising the property we were just talking about, they're on the freeway, she added the time ordinance. I don't know, I'm sure they don't comply, they're eight feet by ten feet tall, so you can see them at eighty miles an hour.
Did you get your bill?
Will you, will you send me a... Can you send me a C-signal system?
Okay.
But I think there would be areas like that where a real estate sign makes sense to have a bigger one.
Yeah, I mean, my construction signs are about eight square foot. They're used by four foot. They're used by four foot, so they may be a hair larger, I can give or take. I see, they're thirty inches by three foot. So that's a new alliance. By the time I'm at the rider below, this is just one floor. But this is, this has gone, I mean, this is, this is a master plan, this has gone off, I mean, and like I said, I read this twice, and, I mean, this gets all the way into neonic plastic signs and the whole works. I mean, this is, you know, fifteen years, but the sign is down the road. And we start talking about hotels and gas stations.
Now, we started to go through these one by one in our last meeting. You want to continue that tonight?
All I know is that St. George wished that they had never got into some of the sign situations that they regret you.
Like those big ones on Sunset and Black, terrible, no.
And I, Siri was saying, Ian was saying, Angus was saying, they got in, they got in master planning their ordinances. If the town grew, as the town grew, the sign ordinances were planned many, many years in the future. And they did, they did have plastic signs, you know, they were, they had one, but...
Well, there are some changes that need to be made, like on the political campaign signs, we need to eliminate that. It's impinging on the right of free speech and running for public office, so there are some things that will need to be changed. And we can either go through these one by one and we can make recommendations as to what you think we should do. We can do that tonight, or we can do it individually and bring it back in two weeks.
Now, how, Angie, how does a political campaign sign, because I know, I know in a lot of areas, in a lot of cities, that they need to be removed within a certain amount of time frame after the elections, how does that impose on free speech?
That part is not going to change. After the election, it must be removed in seven days.
After, so following the election, signs that would be placed, holding a private property with permission, property owners will not place on, however, within the guidelines.
It's, it's the distance before the election that was limiting that is considered an infringement procedure.
I didn't have to tell you that.
This stuff's cross-talked, yeah? This is the time frame before, and this is the size.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I have one question and then a suggestion, and that is, when it talks about ten percent of the building's front wall area or ten percent of the tenant's front facade area, the one thing I'm not able to follow with that is that, is that an additive type of thing? Where a building owner is allowed to use ten percent of the front and then the individual business is able to use ten percent of their tenants' area?
The way I would interpret it would be if I owned my own standalone building, my sign should not exceed ten percent of my facade. Alternatively, if I lease some space, my sign shall not exceed ten percent of the total facade that I lease.
So you're saying that Walton Plaza ought to be able to have a sign that's twenty percent of its facade?
No. So if there were one business in Walton Plaza that owned the building, instead of having multiple businesses in the building, then that, they should have a sign that's ten percent the size of their facade. They could, they could potentially. Alternatively, so, you know, I lease space there in Walton Plaza that's, yeah, twenty feet wide, twenty feet tall, so four hundred square feet, so I should have a sign that's no larger than forty square feet. Which is four by four.
But there's avenues for it on the plaza.
Currently there?
There are avenues total.
Oh.
So you're talking twenty-seven or twenty-four square feet?
No, just a little smaller.
Some are larger.
Some are bigger, some are smaller, yep.
The point that I'm raising, if you just look at, it says in commercial zones, each commercial building or tenant therein may have one wall sign. So I think it's additive the way it reads, I don't know if it's intended that way. But I, that was my one question. My suggestion is that we do a couple of things. One is to make the public aware that this is going to be a discussion, posting it on our website, separate apart from the agenda, just to try to draw attention to it so that we get some public input into this. The other thing is, I think we should come back with our specific read-throughs and put them in writing and share them with, you know, each other and the public, so that we really do adequately collect the questions that are raised as we read through this. But I'm concerned that trying to sit here and read through it point by point, I'd like to move this process forward, but I'm afraid that process is not necessarily going to get us a really good finishing point. So I would suggest it be a discussion item again on June the twelfth, that not only council members, but the public be encouraged to offer up their thoughts. So we could post something on the website that would call people's attention to the fact that a new sign ordinance is under consideration.
So you want two public hearing notices or just more?
I don't think it's going to have to be a public hearing, I think it can just be requesting, yes, it's going to be a discussion item, but just asking, you know, please know that there will be a discussion.
And we can specifically notify Dave Harbor.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so, we are going to table this item until the twelfth with a posting on the website of the proposed changes, and each council member will read through this and bring things specific that they wish.
I, Mary, can I make a suggestion? I don't think it would be a table item because this was a discussion item, so therefore it'd just be a continuation of a discussion item.
Frank said what I was going to say.
Okay.
Okay, I move, I move.
Continue.
We continue discussion, chapter twenty-two, the sign of the land use plan to June twelfth.
Do we, do we need a motion?
That's why I made the announcement of what we're going to do. Continue this discussion at this point on the twelfth, a notification to the public on the website, that it is available to come in and look at or to look up on the website and see if they have any objections. And each council member will come prepared to address any specific ones that they wish were changed. Then, if we have significantly changed it, I believe we need to have a public hearing. Public hearing's been held on what this was, right?
My understanding is that the town council can make modifications to a planning commission recommendation without a separate public hearing needing to be held. I believe that's what we heard from Bob Nicholson when he was last with us.
Okay. I know that we had legal, legal rulings that you don't have to have one public hearing at both, but a lot of towns do. Okay, so moving on to item eight D, Scholman, I'm sure there's going to be a water tank.
I thought you were going to talk about taxes first.
Oh, no, that's right, you came in like we moved that from next agenda.
I was here, I was here last meeting, presented this, Elliot Scholman from the L D W A. And there was a question that came up about whether there's anything suspicious or anything to tank, there's nothing of that sort. So there's no dangerous substances on site. I know Nate wasn't at the last meeting, I can go over it quickly, just the, the reason we're going to the council is because the planning commission has two members on it, there are also water board members. If they're not allowed to be part of this process, which they, we don't feel they should be because of conflict of interest, they don't have a quorum, so they can't vote on issues. So that's why we're coming directly here. Let's see, the site's going to be improved, it won't be left as is, it has been there as far as we know, fifty years. We're not going to make any changes to the structure, landscaping will be done, it'll be improved. We did have a question about CenturyLink, as they are also a utility, whether or not that work that was done there was permitted first. And secondly, more important to this issue is, is it the rural residential, see, that's how it's listed on your, on your website, that's all we find. I know a request was made by Wayne, I don't know if you got an answer to that.
We found out from former mayor Allen Rogers that they did have a building permit to do that.
Is that something we get a record of, is that a copy of that be helpful when we do the permitting process if we get through here?
We can probably find it, I talked to Dennis about it.
The other issue is rural residential, is it the rural residential?
As best we can tell, on his zoning map, it's rural residential.
We, as a group, we, the water board does not want to pursue commercial zones. The reason we don't want to do that is we don't want to bring that threat up to the area. We would pursue it as a future use, years from now, when nobody, none of us are around, so we don't feel it's a viable option. Using an example of another utility, it's rural residential, we're asking for either one of two things, either grandfathered and as-is, under residential, using them as the reason, or for willing to do the conditional use on there, which is something that you've got on your ordinances. Again, I gave the number last time, but we're, one-on-one, and under land ordinance two thousand and eight, actual four, chapter fourteen, under fourteen point three, conditional uses, fourteen point three point two, public utilities and essential services, we would ask to be put in under that. So what I'm requesting is that, that we get put on the action item for the next meeting, for a vote on whether or not we can get that, be it one of those two.
Now, what, what has changed, at one point in time they were talking about adding to the structure, building, put a trailer there?
No, that was, I wrapped it up the last meeting, it's not a trailer, there was a trailer there, and that was removed.
That's not going to happen to the structure the way it's this now, it's still necessarily going to be storage, like you're going to put some...
Upstairs, yeah, we'll have, it'll be two-story, bottom would be work area, then storage upstairs would be...
Offations.
And there was a trailer there, so it's, what was left of it, that was removed. And the reason we're using it for storage, because the area's always been a storage yard, so we don't feel, as I said last time, we haven't put electricity in because we don't want to look like we're stepping on anyone's toes through the process. So we would like to electricity in because we need that even as a storage work unit, but we haven't, we haven't pursued that yet. We've got a cost on it, but we haven't pursued that yet. We won't do that because it isn't sort of an initial approval for the gas.
One of the things that came up, and just so that you understand, there would be windows and entry doors and the like on...
If we can, if we can make people work harder without windows like they do in Vegas, we may as well.
Well, what did come up was, I don't know if you had occasion to speak with, I understand, but did you have occasion to speak with, the question was, could it be modified in a way that from a building inspection standpoint, it would be viewed as acceptable?
Yeah, contacts have made it, we haven't gotten together with, with...
Does?
Yeah, yeah, but we will, yes, we cut it out, put the door in, and when we did that at that time, we asked whether or not we'd be able to, you know, how, what can we do, they cut it out every once in a while. And actually, that's fairly easy if you've got the right kind of equipment. So, yeah, I mean, there would be windows, doors, we have to have all the, we have to probably have two doors in at least on the upper floor.
In the existing tank, but you're going to build above, a second floor above the existing tank?
Inside the tank.
So you're not going to add to the tank at all?
No, it's really, it actually, it actually, we're not just going to put one to hide.
You're just going to cut off, I think you mentioned at the last meeting, certain pipes that extend out of it, I just drive by daily, so...
It'll be made, again, it'll be landscaped, it'll be, yeah, any, yeah, and we understand that's an issue that we have to deal with. We would like to do is, we can do, the way we can configure it, we could have hard parking areas behind the tank. The only reason is for aesthetic reasons, we would like to keep it as natural as possible because that would fit in with the area in the center. We don't want to, I mean, if something's required, we would do that, but we would like to make it fit. We don't want it to stick out anymore than it does already, and that's why we deal with landscaping and gravel and all that. We could have a landscaping area behind it, however we're going to configure it to, you know, for the one or two cars that sit there during the day.
That makes a lot more sense than the hesitation that I may have read into it from, but it sounded like they were going to build a structure on top of it and possibly put a trailer behind over parking back there and all the words, but, so the footprint of the building, the height, everything's just inside.
Yeah, if you don't look in, it's really, it's really high.
What about, what about seven feet?
We, we haven't made any initial...
I mean, you're going to...
Yeah, we're, obviously we'd have to do that now. Or, I mean, unless we don't do the windows, we probably would be bad for it.
Keep it natural, it's outside.
Yeah, no, we would definitely, I mean, obviously we'd have to do that. It'd hurt many for that.
One of the things I was looking into was the idea of paving, and you mentioned your preference there, but one ordinance is a ten-foot requirement for hard surface between the street and the beginning, the start of the driveway area.
That makes sense because, I mean, it's a busy road, and you're already getting a lot of breakup on that road, you know, I mean, I drive it every day, or every other day, and, yeah, we wouldn't have a problem with that. That wouldn't make sense if a car was visually, it would look better than, yeah, we would have a problem with that.
That, does that make sense? Sort of the concept of what I had visualized ten years ago.
So, so what we have currently is, is a tank that is not going to go away, it is there. We do have provision for, and this would be the operating facility, you would not be having large public meetings there.
No, we would still, and I think of last meeting too, we would have, we would still have them here. We could handle, our normal meetings are like this, we usually get three extra cars, you know, maybe six people. Last meeting, we didn't have anybody, but, you know, it won't be very large, for it's going to be like, like the meetings we have. We have a large meeting for whatever reason, we still do it here, or the fire station, wherever we're allowed to do it.
I believe you're, you're looking at a four hundred square foot working area, on the upper area.
I don't know the exact dimensions.
I think they did the math last time, I can't remember for sure. And when I talked to Dennis, like he was saying, that for each office person that would be working there, they would require a ten-by-ten, which would be a hundred square feet. And when I talked to Dennis, he was saying that for each office person that would be working there, they would require a ten-by-ten, which would be a hundred square feet. So it would allow you to have maximum of four, four people working in there. And for each person, there would be a certain number of windows and doors, door or doors if it went larger than that. But it seems like with that limited square footage, that probably just working at one door, you have to work with him to calculate about what, which we would do.
We have drawings up already. We've done some initial drawings, and so we know what we're looking at. So we have enough to show somebody now and say, what do you think? I'm thinking we probably want two doors just for...
Number CS.
Yeah, we want to do that if we have to. It's a long-term project. We have another, we have another year and a half on our lease of Rice Bank Building. It's because of the expense, we're going to do it piece by piece. So we'll be putting some pieces at a time. The windows aren't quite the person that we do doors, but it'll be, it'll be a long-term process. We're looking for as much inexpensive materials and as much volunteer help we can get. So we're looking long-term wise.
Have you had any discussions with neighboring property owners?
You know, we, at the last public meeting, we announced that, we've been talking about it for about a year, but we now made a public announcement about it, and everybody liked it. Nobody, nobody seemed to have a problem, including people who live up in that area. And they actually, they liked the idea of us doing something like this opposed to it sitting there as an empty water tank.
So we would probably require a public hearing to do the conditional use. And it would require a notification of all...
All affected parties?
Owners within, I think it's six hundred feet or something.
I can interject. I'm in favor of the idea. An old building has no use right now, or very little, storage space, and utilizing is a great idea. I'm just concerned about how we go about doing it. We're really talking about an office building, which would fall under our commercial zoning. And I feel like trying to put, push it in as a conditional use under rural residential zoning as a public utility, common essential service, don't know that really fits. And maybe I don't have the right understanding of the definition. I also want us to think about other businesses that are going on in Silver Leaf. We had, oh, I guess it was equivalent of a home health care facility on Juniper. And we had a guy operating a vacation rental on High Desert. And we, as a council, and as a council, had a really strong stance and said, no, we can't do those kinds of commercial activities. And so are we trying to incorporate double standards here? Granted, it's LDWA. We all drink the water. Should there be an exception for LDWA? And I don't have the answer right now.
Well, again, we're not asking, we're not asking for anything special. That's where, where I brought up the conditional uses and the fact that public utilities and whatever essential services are, which I think water is, is under that heading. So you do have, you do have an option available too. And to be honest, we're, you know, we want to run through the process, but we're also, we're also going to look at other utilities over here that's on the rural residential and say, well, what's the difference?
Let me ask you, Wayne brought up a good thing regarding the variance. Underneath, underneath our statues, what is the variance? Do we have a variance clause in our statues?
I'm not going to find anything.
Because, because they may be the same thing, but they may be different. They may be different.
That was my question at the last meeting, because I'm not sure.
I would propose maybe a slightly different alternative solution. I think it ought to go through the, through the zone change to commercial zoning. I understand the concern about LDWA selling it to somebody else. What if there was a deed restriction put on it, said LDWA shall never sell this property, or if they do, the commercial zoning shall immediately become rural residential?
Well, am I incorrect in that you can't, that public utilities aren't covered under conditional uses? I mean, that's a rare reading.
They are, but is it for an office building? We're really talking about an office building.
Well, you're talking about a public utility. If you look at the, if you look at what's going over here, it is an office building. I can show you the water rates and what they were last year and what they are now. There's people there every, every day. I drive by it, and there's one, two, three cars down there. They're using it as something where people are staying out there in the day. You know, I keep hitting you with that, but it looks like a direct, it looks like a direct link to what it is we wanted.
We need to find out from CenturyLink because, Mayor, could we ask Alan, since he's here, to answer that question?
Well, of course, we can ask him. I would say, in talking to Dennis, he said that, that there are people that are working every day, that have a bathroom. He doubts if there's more than three people, if anyone hide working there, using more than two. But we can have Alan come up and give us some background on it.
Hi, Alan. Public utility does have a, does have a clause that says, whatever the zoning may be, if it's part of their system, they are exempt from having to comply with that zone, whatever the zone is. That structure for CenturyLink is part of their system. Their data communication comes into that facility. There are individuals that work in that facility. What LDWA is talking about on their tank, when that tank was used for storage of water, individuals could go there, work on that all day long, and were in compliance because it was part of their system. What they're asking for is a change in use. It's not part of the system. Its occupancy is different than a system occupancy. Therefore, it's a change. I think it would be irresponsible, this council, to not consider what the intent for the use of that facility really is. Just go through the same process we would ask any other individual that comes into this town to go through the process. Any questions?
No. And that's what we're trying not to, I know that you're a public utility system, but at the same time, we don't want to get into a situation to where people show, see us as showing any kind of shavishism or stepping out, stepping on one side, agreeing one side to the other because I agree with...
Well, I guess we could say that we, ours is a nerve center in so much as we do keep data on file as far as the tank levels and such, and we keep it on facility. I mean, I, I think we're, I think that we're parsing definitions here. I, if they have people on site in its utility, and those people are on site running the business for whatever reason, we're doing the same thing. I mean, again, we do have data that we collect at our LDWA office that's monitored every day. I don't, I don't really see a difference.
I would, I would disagree because these are, these are lines that are running through the phone system that are part of the flow of utility, and you could put your computer anywhere.
I'm curious, if we, if we ran water through the tank in some manner, and we tested the water at that location, would that qualify?
Yeah.
That seems like, that seems like a, that seems like a very little thing to get us right over to what we already need to take.
Is that, is that something that you're able to do?
I don't know.
We have, we have water in the tank. There's water in the tank.
To the tank.
But water, the services leads...
The water can be tested in the tank.
And it is water that services leads?
It services leads, yes.
The water in the tank does?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that. We could use it as a testing facility. Again, we do get, what we're doing right now is, the way we're setting up our system, it's going to get a lot more complicated as far as we're going to be monitoring a lot more than we have now. We're doing it now more now.
You've already increased it a lot.
Yeah, and we're going to probably, we do need, the term to use nerve center, I don't know if I call it that, but we do need a central location. We're bringing together a lot of information, a lot that's going to be electronic, but, I mean, we have some pretty big plans, so.
And you can, you can verify, you can test water and give reports?
I can, I can check on it and get back to you.
Because I think that, that would be your main sticking point, your main reason to look closer, whether they're actually testing the system, testing the water.
At that point, it becomes more than an office building, in my mind.
Yeah, my, my concern is, is that if you have growing space, then we have a white elephant. What do we use it for?
I guess, I guess my comment back would be, you have a white elephant already.
Right, but...
I mean, it, it would look nice with some stacked rocks, trees, you know, around it, painted, you know, a nice parking area. You know, I mean, right now, it's a white elephant. It isn't going to go anywhere. I can tell you right now, it's, what is it, ten feet or... I don't know, it's about this thick. It's not going to fall down ever. So, I mean, if we don't do something with it, it's going to be there. No, it would cost a tremendous amount of money to take it out, so I don't think anybody ever would. So it's kind of a white elephant now. That's why we're, that's why we think it'd be a good idea to use it. The land's owned already. There would be no expense to us on a yearly basis. It just seemed ideal. It seemed like it, it got us off the hook of having to find a place that we can lease, and it gives us the ability to use something right now that's really not used on there. And I think it would bring value to the area, and people would appreciate it. Plus, having a water company, a water tank might be something that brings people to the area to get a photo op. I mean, I don't know. I mean, we've got some strange stuff already around here. It's just one more thing. People might want to, German tourists, I bet, would love it.
I think, I think the break in the barrier would be the actual testing. If that could be, in my opinion, just my personal opinion, that if you were, if you were able to put records of the testing facility there, and actually test the water there, then that would make it your main, your main, your main, one of your main sources of the utility company.
Okay, that's something we might be able to do, but I don't know at this point. Is there, I mean, is it possible we could get a conditional use without doing that?
Well, you have to run water to it anyway.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's a water tank. It had water going through it, right? Yeah? I can look into that. I mean, I can get a pretty quick answer on that for you.
I mean, that, that way, we wouldn't have to run the gray line because you're being compliant with the same thing with CenturyLink.
My, my view as a council member is, I think ultimately, we need to make a decision on it. I know you were asking for a decision in advance, expending a lot of money. And I can appreciate that, but I think it's important that we make sure that the residents whose properties are most, who are adjacent or close enough to it to be impacted have an opportunity to voice. That doesn't mean it's their vote. As a council, I think we ultimately need to make a decision on this.
Yeah, and we want that too.
But I don't think it's the kind of decision you want to make without making sure they're aware of it. If they choose to be silent, they can choose to be silent, but we need to make sure that they're making that choice.
Yeah, and we don't have a problem with that. I mean, we're very sensitive to the area and to the people that live there. I mean, there is a field across the street right now.
The cows, they're not going to be asked for that.
I don't think they're going to want to, but it's...
Can you get a letter to them? They're going to sit on a date.
We have to.
But, yeah, I mean, I need to bring it directly to you guys, though, because we can't use a planning permission because if we take off our two people, there is no planning permission.
I think those are the two issues. If we let it out to the residents at six hundred feet, and when they return to go to testing facility, and imagine like keeping that, that way, it wouldn't be walking the gray line or actually being left in one. My opinion, any other comment? So what funds would pay for this? I know we're all assessed that water users at twenty dollars.
The rates are going to double.
Don't tell them that.
Well, I could start rooming. The rates are going to double, and your volume is going to be cut in half.
Now, we're already getting an improvement. They all put twenty dollars on my house. This can be another movement.
Thanks for telling them about the restaurant we're going to put on top of it.
That's a McDonald's.
Yeah.
I'll go with that.
We're paying with it through savings. We're doing it pretty well financially right now. We've implemented some things on foreclosures and such, since bringing the credit revenue. And we're still going to do it long-term, though, because it's going to be a slow process financially for us to cover. But we've already dropped, as you all know, we dropped rates five bucks, just to make a point, which is, we're not going to raise your rates. We're going to, we may be this long off a lot sooner than we expected, and if we do that, then we drop the rates.
Unless the rent goes up.
Yeah, unless the rent goes up. Little notch, but, yeah, if you're talking, if you're saying, if you're asking, is it going to go with rates now? We, we're firmly, I mean, the reason the rates are what they are now is to cover the project. We're still working with, say, twenty dollars we used to get. The first, I don't know if you're all aware, but the first twenty dollars that we did on a paid schedule was right enough to fund the cover loan. That's part of the deal. We had to do it to get the loan. So we're working with twenty dollars a month, not forty per shareholder. And again, we had twenty-five. We cut it back to twenty because we wanted to let people know that we're watching and repaying. So, and the reason we're doing this, short-term, there is an expense, but long-term, it will save us a lot of money. And it gets a, it gets a location that will always be there, so you won't have different groups jumping around at different places. It's kind of centrally located, you know?
Now, what about building specs? Let me just bring up a hypothetical question. So let's say that neighbors around the area say, well, we've always hated the tank. Now you've made it into a storage area. We don't like that. Now you're going to make it into a storage and an office, and we don't like the color. We don't, we don't like the shade. We would like these things done to it that would make it, like, somebody would say, well, we'd like some type of a pitch roof on it to make it look like that if you're driving by, it looks like it's just part of the residence. I mean, I've seen these things happen in other places where there's specs put on to make something fit in. I mean, even some of the places where they have sewer systems, they put it inside of the house and makes it look like this is part of the neighborhood, so.
I've never seen that before. That sounds interesting.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, we, you know, I mean, it's, again, every, what's interesting, what I, what makes me feel comfortable is everybody that moved there, and everybody that built their tank was there before they worked. So if they had a problem with the tank, I don't think they would have moved there. So I don't think they're going to have those problems. As far as putting, you know...
Well, but see what happens is...
Lays a window curtain in it or something.
Everybody's grown up in a town where you have the big water tanker, they have the tank on the hill, and everybody knows the tank's there. They move in the neighborhood. And after a while, they don't look at it. But now you're going to change something, and you're going to make it something different. People are going to have a different...
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, right now, it's a tank on an empty lot. Would it look better if it stacked? And let's say you have cyber streets going around half of it facing the road, that kind of stuff. Personally, I think it would, and like I said, you know, we, I mean, the community is our, is our shareholders, basically. So we are sensitive to their needs, and we've been talking about this off the record for, how long? Maybe a year and a half? You know, just seeing what people thought, and the response has been great. I haven't gotten anybody, as a matter of fact, I've had so many people come in there to build volunteer out within that six hundred feet distance is one of our priorities. So, I mean, I don't think anybody's really going to have much of a problem with it. The way, I mean, the way we'll present it, again, we have some drawings up for it already, but it's in a better location. It's kind of in the middle of everything, so it'd be better that way. But, I mean, we're dealing, again, it's not like we're asking to go from scratch. It's already there. We're just asking for a chance to maybe better, make, bring something valuable to the neighborhood right now. It's just not that interesting.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I just would prefer that we notify the people, get that input, before we start offering opinion as council, and then ask for input. That seems to be the wrong way.
And we're very open to that. If there was, if there was, you know, a lot of anger about it, if we're showing up in meetings with pitchforks who have that and stuff. But we have talked about it a lot at meetings, including the last public meeting where we made the announcement, this is what we're going to attempt to do. And, I don't know, there were eighty people here, and they all were excited about it, so I, not one person told me they didn't want it, if that's going to help.
So, how about I draft a letter and send it out to all the neighboring property owners? I need to see if we get a response.
Well, I think you need to set a date when you plan on discussing it. I don't think it's set separately, a public hearing on it. But I'm not sure, I'm due to the council, I'm not sure what the requirements would be with regard to sending out... But I'm not sure, I'm, I'm due to the council, I'm not sure what the requirements would be with regard to setting up that type of water, if it has to be a public hearing, or we can just notify them of a discussion topic and wanting to make sure, since it is in close proximity to their property, that we wanted to make absolutely sure they were aware of it.
Look, this would be...
At some point, we might need, yeah, we would need to have a public hearing. I'm just asking, do we need to have a public hearing at the stage of just requesting the, um, neighborhood?
I wasn't asking for a public hearing. Just drafting a letter, sending it out to the neighbors and seeing if we get a response. For a conditional use, we would require a public hearing.
Right.
At that point, but this would just be a stage, like, stage one for, for this point. Um, any other thoughts? Uh, is that, is that enough to give move at this point?
I'm favored that approach.
And, and again, would it be possible to get a copy of the permit that was, that was agreed for Century Link? No rush, but definitely so.
Yeah, building permit.
Are there conditional use, are there conditional use, or conditional use of...
No, they don't have that. They're a rural residential. But the permit itself, that'd be helpful through the process.
But it's a conditional use of residential property.
Are they under conditional use?
No, no, you said no. I understand it correctly. It is rural residential, correct, not for Century Link.
They're not under a conditional use. It's part of their system.
They're rural residential, correct?
They're rural residential, yes.
Um, yeah, so I, I don't need that.
It's just like your tank does not have a condition on it where it's placed.
So would it be possible...
Because it's part of your system, was part of your system.
I understand. Uh, would it be possible to get a copy of that at some point, just as, if I had help?
How many years has it been there? Building?
Nineteen forties.
Early forties.
Oh, seventy.
He's, he's requesting the Century Link, not, not, not the, not the water tank.
For, for just the improvement building permit?
Yeah. If that's, if you, if that's...
We'll see what we can bring up.
Thanks.
So...
And again, I, I appreciate you guys. I'm sorry I have to jump over and come straight to you guys. I know that's kind of out of the ordinary, but I appreciate you guys listening to me.
So, um, Christie, do you think that you could, uh, do some research in our files and see if you could find a building permit? Um, I could contact, or you could call Dennis and see if he recalls when, what year that might have been issued? I didn't ask him that one, but he...
It was about a year and a half, I remember.
Okay. It was very fresh in his mind, that's why.
Building permit.
Per the position.
They guess in the century, so we request our Century Link, uh, in use. But, yes. Yeah, I feel like if you do that, it could just make it, you know, to store this more.
Okay, as so, do we have any, um, citizen comments?
Christie, could you check the sign sheet just to see if anybody signed up wanting to speak tonight, please?
That's why my name's there. You gonna let me?
Yeah, we're calling for citizen comments.
Just wanted to make sure.
And nobody responded, so he's about to move on.
Yes, it's me. I didn't want to do this, but, um, I'm gonna have to. My name's Peter Orosjama. I'm still a member of the planning commission. I'd like to know what happened to, um, the mixed use ordinance review. I'd like to know what happened to the conditional use ordinance review from the, from the town council. I'd like to know what happened to the, the, uh, commercial, commercial ordinance that we, that we submitted. I'd like to know what, um, why you're not reviewing, um, um, the parking ordinance, uh, chapter six. I guess ordinance six, I believe. I'd like to know why there, there's only the sign ordinance. Are you gonna deal with one every, uh, three months, or how, how is that gonna, how is that gonna go?
It sounds like a good idea.
And, and, and I am disappointed with the sign ordinance. Two weeks ago, you said that, you know, everyone would review it and, and, um, come with their ideas, and, um, I heard very well. I, I'm very disappointed.
Second part?
I don't have one. Uh, we, we heard a lot on the town budget, nothing beyond that.
Anything else, Carl?
Thank you.